We are waiting for one more person to be added. Commissioner Andrew, I think you can start.
Okay, thank you, Ceylan. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for being here today. So there was no pre-meeting, just to note, and you received your agenda. This city commission meeting is being held via Zoom, which is basically an internet-based meeting platform for the public meeting while being conducted in a virtual manner in order to comply with the State of Kansas Governor Kelly's Executive Order Number 2016, will comply with the Kansas Open Meeting Act. And we've given several ways that you can participate as the public. We do have a, you can actually participate on the Zoom, and there's also a live Facebook. We want to let you know in just a moment, to participate in the Zoom meeting, the participants must use either the Raise Your Hand function or Ask a Question in the Question and Answer option at the bottom of the screen of Zoom. Whether you are physically speaking or typing a question, you must identify yourself with your first and last name. This applies to every question you ask. Questions will only be answered as they correlate to the topic at hand. So we just asked for your patience, and we're excited about today's meeting virtually. It's great to see everyone, Commissioners, Matt and Jennifer, Randy, Ceylan. We're excited. There's a lot of back work that's gone on today. And so I'm going to go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. Ceylan, do we have quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So it's Commissioner Dick's opportunity to offer the Pledge of Allegiance, and then also the invocation. So we can stand and face whatever flag is nearest you, and Commissioner Dick will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. I'll lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow with me. Dear God, thank you for all that you've done for us. Help us remember that even in times of strife, we still have so many things to be thankful for. Please be with us as we make decisions today to help us to be wise, kind, and fair. Please be with our doctors, nurses, medical staff, first responders, and other frontline workers as they care for our community. Please be with our teachers, school staff, and parents as they work to continue the education of our youth. Please be with their essential workers as they continue to risk the healths of them and their families to provide America with the food and vitally needed supplies. Please be with our other community leadership teams as they navigate through this. And please be with all of you as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick, for the Pledge of Allegiance and also for that powerful invocation. So item number four, Matt, says approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which if no corrections are offered, shall stand approved. And I need to say, this is Mayor Andrew. I'm doing number four. So do we have a motion?
This is Shannon Dick.
Do we have a second?
This is Deb. I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Roy says aye.
Aye.
Yep, aye.
Yeah, Shannon says aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, are you there? Okay, so we have approval, four to one, four to zero. I appreciate it. Thank you. So at this time, we generally have public comment. We read earlier about how we'd like you to do public comment. And so again, we're going to have people either raise your hand, or also you can post comments in the public, in the question and answer section. So again, we'll go ahead and open up this time for a public comment. We do, again, ask you to state your name, and then also keep your comments to no more than five minutes. We have 30 minutes for this section of our, of our agenda.
Mayor Andrew, I do not see anyone raising their hand to speak.
Is there anyone in the question and the question to answer?
No.
Okay.
I think that leads us to item 6A, Mayor. This is a request from Cecilia Douglas, Grant Development Manager at Kansas Children's Service League, to allow the mayor to proclaim April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Roy Sessna makes the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
So we have a motion, Commissioner, or Mayor Andrew, Commissioner Sessna has motioned. Do we have a second?
This is Deb Euler. I'll second.
Commissioner Euler, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Roy Sessna, aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Deb Euler, aye.
Troy, Andrew, aye. So that will be, the ayes, fours, four ayes and zero nays. Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is a request for a temporary zoning waiver from the zoning regulations for property located at 619 Garden City Avenue during the north phase of the Eighth Street Reconstruction Project. Carol?
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, okay, sorry. Okay, to recap what I said without anybody hearing me. I, the, in 2021, the city will begin construction on the Eighth Street project. There will be a couple phases. The north phase, during the north phase, between Buffalo Jones and Ellen Street, that section of Eighth Street will be closed. While that section is closed, there will not be an opportunity for people to park on Eighth Street. The businesses will still be open. So this waiver is to kind of help with, with this conundrum we've got going on when we've got the street closed. So if you look at the diagram, we've got a proposal to add in a temporary parking lot at 619 Garden City Avenue. This waiver is to waive the zoning regulations, the R3 regulations, which the 619 property is located within the R3 district, does not allow parking lots. So this waiver is to waive that regulation. It's also to waive the parking regulations in the zoning regulations, which states that parking lots need to be paved with a hard surface. So what staff is proposing, and we have been in contact with the owner of this property, is to clear the property, remove a few dead trees in the property, and then lay gravel down. Customers will access this parking lot via the alley that's in between Eighth Street and Garden City Avenue. There will not be any access off of Garden City Avenue, just through the alley. And then, for the customers, once they park in that parking lot, they will be able to access Eighth Street through the property located at 615 and 617 Eighth Street. And, and then they will have access to the businesses because, as I mentioned, the businesses will be open. So that is what this waiver is for. I do want to mention, in the consent agenda today, there are two different items for two different agreements that are in conjunction with this waiver. The motion that you Commissioners will be making today or this afternoon will be just on the waiver at this point. And as I mentioned, when you get to the consent agenda, there, there will be two public improvement project agreements to be either approved or denied. There are consent item L3 and L4, and I just want to go over those really quick since those are kind of part of this project. The first one, L3, is the lease agreement for 619. So the parking lot that we talked about that's going to be put in, there is a lease agreement with the owner of that property. And I didn't mention this earlier, but at the time, the, the construction for the north phase is going to last about nine and a half months. Once that nine and a half months ends, that property at 619 Garden City Avenue will be reverted or changed back to how it was before. So the gravel will, will be removed, and the property will be cleaned up for, for the owner. So there is a lease agreement with that. That one has a $2,500 cost to that lease in the fiscal note. And then staff will be doing, all of the physical labor and materials will be coming out of the parts and streets budget. And then the other item on the consent agenda, which was L4, that is dealing with an agreement with the owners at 515, 517 North Eighth Street, so that customers can walk through their area. If you look on the diagram or the map, it's the area that has a bunch of parks or cars parked in it, and then there's a blue arrow through it. That's how people will access Eighth Street. So this, this agreement is to allow public to walk across these people's property. They have agreed, the owners of this property have agreed to this agreement, and then, and this, as I mentioned, is in the consent agenda. So for you right now, though, is the waiver. So your options are to approve the waiver, or not approve the waiver, or give staff another idea or direction to go for access to Eighth Street during the construction project. And staff recommends approval of the waiver.
So this is Troy, Andrew. Does anyone have any questions of Carol? Any Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Sessna. One quick question. The access in the alleyway, is that an improved alleyway? Or is that just kind of, is that dirt?
It's, it's dirt. There will be gravel put in it. When, when the, the parking area is kind of resurfaced with gravel, that the, our Public Works Department will also take a look at the alley. It won't be paved, but it will have gravel on the surface so that dirt's not kicked up as people travel on it.
And Commissioner Sessna, again, will have signage to kind of direct people to this parking lot?
Yes, there will be signage on Walnut Street slash Buffalo Jones Avenue. You know, on the other parts of Eighth Street, there will have as much sign as we can get up there to kind of direct traffic to this location to, for parking.
So this, this is Mayor Andrew. Carol, as far as for the people who live in that area, because I know that there is some housing in that area, will they continue to use their current parking situations? Or will this be available to them also?
Um, well, for the north part, and they, they can certainly use this. I think most of the houses will be able to have access. When they have the north part closed, there's just a couple houses up there on the north. And through the alley, they'll have access through both, both alleys. The one on between Ninth and Eighth, and then the one between Garden City Avenue and, and Eighth. So I think most, most of the owners will have access to their, their own private parking.
Thank you. Mayor Andrew, any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Sessna makes the motion to approve the approval of the waiver as presented.
So we have a motion, Commissioner Sessna made a motion. Is there a second?
Shannon Dick, I'll second.
Commissioner Dick has seconded, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Deb Euler, aye.
Roy Sessna, aye. Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. Oppose, same sign? So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, under the report of the city manager, item A, is to make you aware of a change that we made administratively. And the, one of our utilities, Commercial Solid Waste, has a rate structure such that everybody does pay an assigned base rate for both residential, commercial, and in commercial, but that's a once-per-week pickup and a one-container volume. So additional, additional containers or additional frequency can, can be added, and oftentimes are added. But that has an additional charge above and beyond the base charge. So customers can then call at any time to scale back that, the, either the frequency or the number of containers. Frequency is easy to adjust. If they were getting picked up four times a week, and we go to three times a week, that's just, just a note that's taken by the route driver, and, and the adjustment on the bill is made. If it's a reduction in the number of containers, we would go pick up the container, take it back to the solid waste yard. And, and there are some businesses that are, that are seasonal, and, and you know, that they'll have a larger waste stream in one part of the year than they will in another, and we'll adjust their bill and adjust the number of containers on their property accordingly. As, over the last few weeks, our drivers had noticed a pretty significant drop-off in volume. And operationally, this impacts, you know, we see that impact, and, and they began making notes of the places where they were going around picking up that there was substantially less volume, or not really what appeared to be the, the need to pick up as frequently. And through the drivers working with the supervisors, working with the solid waste administration, the recommendation to me was that this was a way that we could maybe proactively do something that we would administratively do if the customer called us. And so our staff went through and identified on all of our commercial accounts to their best guess what rightsizing that pickup would be for, for this period of time. And based on that, we believe that our proposed adjustments would have a monthly change in the revenue stream, moving us from about $108,000 down to approximately $86,000, about a 21% monthly decrease in, in revenue stream. But again, this could happen with everybody making a phone call as well. And we also don't anticipate this time going out and picking up all these dumpsters, bringing them back into the solid waste yard, just making simply the adjustment on the bill. I've approved these, beginning with the April billing cycle. As we move forward into additional months, we'll visit with vendors about what the right amount of of trash containers and frequency pickup is, is good for them moving forward. But I wanted to make you aware of, of this change, and it also kind of corresponds with maybe some other agenda items later, where we're recommending some adjustments that we don't believe we have the authority to make, but we believe you do. So any questions on that? On that change? Hearing none, we will move to the next item. And that is Finance Director Melinda Hits, and she's going to, she's going to present the 2020 budget calendar.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is the information that we're going to be going through for the next several months on the city's 2020 revised and 2021 budget. In the past, we have provided a paper copy, a black notebook, that would have a lot of information in it. We probably will still be doing that for you to have reference to during these meetings. But what that will include is this calendar, and also our budget policies, our budget assumptions, our capital improvement programs for '20 and '21. It als, it will also include your debt schedules, and then it'll have printouts of all of these funds that you see on your meeting dates. April 24th, although it looks like it's very packed, these are our special revenue funds, and they have a specific revenue and pretty much a specific expense to go along with it. So they move, move through pretty quickly. You get into more detail when you get on May 5th and May 19th. That's your enterprise funds and your utility funds. We get into the taxing funds of the budget starting on May 2nd and 15th. We hope to have our assessed valuation in by the 15th of June so that we can start working on our city mill levy. A big discussion happens on July 7th. If we have all the information we need, we hope to be able to set our mill levy on that date with our publication to go into the paper on July 10th. At your July 21st meeting is when you would have your public hearing, which is a month ahead of the state schedule on when you have to have everything done. If there are no other questions, that is all I had to present today. I just wanted to get these dates on your calendar.
This is Mayor Andrew. Melinda, thank you so much for the calendar. It's always useful also in planning to make sure that those meetings, we know that you highlighted that July 7th is an important meeting. So thank you for putting together the calendar and getting everything out to us. I do like the paper copy. I also appreciate virtual, so that kind of gives you the idea. And as a, as a Commissioner, I always take advantage of meeting with Melinda on, on the basis, every, every time we get a, get it ready to meet with her beforehand, just so I make sure I understand and make sure I'm asking good questions. So I want to thank her for making herself available.
Thank you.
And Commissioners, you would, you'll note that her calendar, let me go back to it and share it. The calendar identifies this April 24th date still. We had changed that because of a conflict in scheduling where many of us were going to be in DC on the 19th and 20th and 20, and returning back on the 21st, which would have been our normal meeting date. So we moved the regular meeting by a majority vote to the 24th. We, we will leave it there unless it's the will of the Commission by a majority vote to move it back to our normal meeting time. We, we don't know what the format of that meeting is going to be yet. Very likely, it could be this same format, but also if the, if there's no extension of the executive order, we'd have the option of meeting on either April 21st or April 24th, much in the same manner we met for the second meeting in March. So knowing that that's the case, is there a desire to move that meeting back to the 21st?
This is Mayor Andrew. I would, I would move that we move the meeting back to the 21st, our regularly scheduled meeting.
Commissioner. This is Commissioner Ortiz, and I would second that motion.
So it's been moved and seconded that we move our meeting from the 24th back to the 21st, a regularly scheduled Tuesday. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please, signal by saying, signify by saying aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye. Commissioner Sessna, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
All those, and so all those oppose? Same sign? So the ayes have it, we'll move the meeting back to the 21st, four or five to basically, four to, to no contest on the other. Thank you so much. Thanks, Matt, for bringing that up also.
You're welcome. And Melinda will move the blue box off of that date onto the 21. That's the only, there wasn't any, any items on this agenda or on a prior agenda that identified a public hearing or anything like that. So other than just making the public aware of when we're meeting, there was, there was no consequence to moving that date. That was the next city manager's item, I see. And then the remaining items under report of the city manager are staff reports. I believe all of those staff are available on this Zoom conference to answer questions if you have some.
This is Mayor Andrew. The only question I had, and I was going to email it earlier just to prepare this idea about the monthly sales. So will we not really see an impact on the monthly sales? We anticipate that in, in April or our next, when, when we see our next sales report, is that correct?
I think the next, to, the next one, I think we'll, you know, we'd likely begin to see what impact that restricting movement and restricting what businesses are open, what that will have. I think the really telling one will be the April or the May receipts, which probably more fully reflect what occurred in, in March. But I think you'll begin to see a little bit of a slowing for some early reporting that shows up on the April, April receipts. Those used to be really, you could have some certainty about, there was, there was kind of that two-month lag. I would say over the last decade or so, it's an individual perception on my part, but I think Melinda shares it. It's an individual perception on my part, but I think Melinda shares it that maybe. The state reporting and receding back to us that there's some things that they do internally that may hold up a distribution. And if that happens on a couple of large accounts. That can really skew skew a monthly report. So we react a little bit more in quarters, sort of three month chunks than we do the month to month. Now, what we show you is month to month because. That's how we receive it from the state, but. You know, there's 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 times where we'll see a big jump. The but it usually followed a a little bit more of a trough than we expected in the reporting. And that's just simply their internal processes catching up. Catching up some some review of some of what the businesses have turned in. And Melinda, do you want to chime in on that?
Everything that you said there, Matt, we've been operating on that philosophy for several years now, so. But yeah, I think the May and the June receipts of this year will reflect. A little bit of a downturn, I well, it will reflect a downturn in those two months. So we'll just have to see what kind of a percentage that is.
We're just and you're aware of this too from past meetings where we've reported on it, but. We're taking measures now in anticipation of that happening. We just completed our internal discussions with departments on their draft. Their their draft budgets and in looking at both revenue and expenses, we're anticipating. A downturn and have gone through the exercise that. Of identifying what what things are going to go away in the in the proposed two thousand twenty amendment. That you all consider as part of your adoption of the two thousand twenty one budget. Okay, under meetings of note, just be advised that the Finney County Economic Development Corporation Board will be held. Virtually instead of being held in the city commission chambers as it normally is. I do have a request from Finney County. Some of you may have seen their live televised broadcast yesterday of their commission meeting. They have requested. And I've checked it out from a staff perspective. I think from a technology wise, we can definitely make it work. There's there's some nuances about pushing to social media live streaming that we need to see if we can push it to their live streaming versus showing it on ours, but. They've requested to use our chambers the next time they meet. They would be doing this in the fashion that they met. Or that we met in this more it'd be more like. Much more like the second meeting of March that we did where our commission was gathered in the room. They were gathered in their room yesterday. They just don't have the equipment set up. And they didn't care for necessarily like camera angle and that type of thing, so. County Administrator has asked if we would make our facility available. From a technology standpoint, we can do it. We have no problem with that. Folks can have access through the stairwell into that meeting room. There aren't any employees up here that are exposed to that area. We would take care of cleaning it after they were done and making sure it was clean before they showed up. It's also the right now scheduled to be the first day after this stay at home order that is in place right now. Expires, so it's really just a policy decision. If you have any problem with that. Either under a stay at home order or not under a stay at home order to help them facilitate a. A a meeting where they can gather and others can attend virtually. And and yeah, if you've got any reason to. Believe we shouldn't do that, then then I'll let them know, but otherwise I'm going to proceed as if that's okay with you.
Yeah, this is Mayor Andrew. I appreciate I attempted to listen. It was very hard to hear. I don't know if they were speaking in the mics or not, but I think. Right now, the things that are coming out of both of our commissions are extremely important, and so. Yeah, having offering them that and then taking the precautions for our staff and the cleaning before and after, I really appreciate you making note of that, so thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. With that, I think we're ready for item nine A. It's the appropriation ordinance, and if approved. It would be number two five oh four dash two thousand twenty A.
I move that this is Shannon Dick. I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number two five oh four two thousand twenty A.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Dick. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Euler, all second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dick, seconded by Commissioner Euler. All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye. Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So it's passes five to one. Thank you. We're getting better at this all the time, so.
This is City Manager Alan. You all are doing a better job of identifying yourself than I am. The next item is ten A, and this is the governing body's consideration. Of an ordinance that annexes a half acre parcel that's generally located at sixteen oh one West Mary. And if approved, this would be ordinance number twenty eight sixty two dash two thousand twenty. Carol.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. Okay. So this this property, if Matt can go to the map, it it's it's pretty straightforward. It's a contiguous piece of property. That the owner. Has recently purchased the the little restaurant that was there on the north side of Mary Street. And they would like to 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 open that restaurant back up again with with obviously what what they want to serve and. They were hoping that maybe in the future they can expand, and so they wanted to annex this property in for future expansion. Like I mentioned, it's contiguous. It's pretty straightforward. That's why we don't need a public hearing. We have consent of the owner and we have a contiguous piece of property here. So the the commission, you can approve this or you can recommend deny or deny this annexation request. Staff does recommend approval of this of this annexation.
This is Mayor Andrew. Do we have any question from the commission?
Commissioner Cessna makes the motion to approve ordinance twenty eight sixty two dash two thousand twenty.
Shannon Dick, all second.
So this is Mayor Andrew. We have a a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. It passes five to zero. Thank you.
The next item is an old business item, eleven A. The governing body is asked to consider a reduced street ceiling option for the two thousand twenty street ceiling program. On what is referred to in our program as cycle one. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so on March seventeenth, excuse yeah, March seventeenth, under consent, we pass or you all passed the. The cycle one for street ceiling. We have six cycles in the city. And what we wanted to do today is bring this back before you again to take another look at it. It's it's a it's an expensive maintenance item that we do with the streets. It's a very good item that we do with the streets, but we wanted to look. I wanted you all to look at it again after talking with. With the city manager and to bring this back before you. And let you all look at and dialogue it a little bit. The original bids for for the vendors came back in this cycle, and we have a map of that cycle as well. It's in the western part of the city. It's a it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred or four hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred fifty eight dollars and eighty cents. And we've we've gone back and talked to all the vendors who. Had the low bids that were approved. If we did a reduced. Cycle one, street ceiling project, if they would honor the prices at the same. That at at a lower volume or low lower number of labor hours that that they make their calculations to. And all three of them said yes, they would honor those, and a lot of the things we've heard back is the city has been good to us over the past few years, and and we will honor that. And so we made those phone calls to those vendors, and so that was nice to hear. And so on those two maps, if if you they're on the attachment. The one the one option we have is to continue with the project as as voted on and approved. And the second one would be to modify the project using the unit prices of the low bids approved on March seventeen, two thousand twenty. To a project total cost of one hundred and sixty eight thousand, seven hundred forty three dollars and twenty cents. With a savings of two hundred eighty one thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. Or alternative three would be to forego this project this year and revisit it next year. Now, I kind of want to talk a little bit about why we decided maybe we could. Bypass this center section of this map. Those streets are they they are crowned a lot more than a lot of the other streets in town. And so what that means is when we have rain or snow and melt like this or water coming, you know, down rather than sitting on the street in low areas. That water tends to be pushed to the curb and gutter and removed from the street area. And doesn't cause as as many issues as it would on a flat street that has some low spots that have more bird baths and and different things like that. And so it is an option that if there were streets in the city where it would cause us less problems in the future. To come back and maintain or potholes that this actually would be. The best area in town for asphalt to be able to make this decision at this point. I did give you guys some information in the packet on what it costs for potholes last year and and what went into for that, and those are considerations too. If we move this and say, hey, we're going to we're going to revisit and try to do all of cycle one next year. That puts us from a six year cycle to seven years out until we complete the cycle again. And so we're we're opening ourselves up to a few winters that could cause a lot of potholes that would cause. Mobilization of the street department again like we did last year, possibly. More in the future. It just depends on the weather and how we and how we approach that and what 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 the elements give us in those. And so I wanted to bring that back before you give you give you a chance to look at that and maybe ask. Some questions and thoughts on that and reconsider what you may want to do in an effort. To save a little money at this point and and weigh what could possibly happen.
So this is Mayor Andrew. Do we have any comments or questions for Andy?
This is Shannon Dick. If we put this off, what are the prices of the materials? What do we anticipate that to be for the next couple of years? Are the the prices continuing to go up, or are we expecting them to stay pretty stable for a few years now?
It's it's hard to know, you know, within the oil prices, and we're seeing them down. Who knows what the oil price will be a year from now? Gravel, it's that's a hard one to predict. We see we see changes, you know. Depending on what projects are going on, how busy. Gravel providers are. It makes a difference in in their bids. And so it's really hard to know how much it would go up or down. Just by the market and what other projects are going on. We see in in the contractor and what they charge per square yard. We kind of see that in in what I've looked at as it just goes up incrementally normally as expenses go up, as inflation happens. It just kind of climbs up there.
This is Mayor Andrew. Any other further questions? And I do have a question as far as. Now, the airport road, is it done? Is it in one of the cycles also, or I know you I see the golf course road because I know. So you you would you would want to do the smaller section and the Buffalo Dunes, or you'd want to do the just a smaller section? I just wanted to make sure and clarify.
Okay, so a couple of questions there. I'll address your first question. Yes, the airport is in a cycle. I believe that was last year. This year is the golf course. Next year, we're budgeting for the cemetery. And then in two thousand twenty two, we go back to the zoo. I may have missed a few things in there, but. If we went back, if I went back and did a little research, we could capture everything, but just a a small run of what we do. So yes, there's that, and then then bring your to ask me your second question again, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I I just want to make sure. So I mean, and I saw the the I'm trying to bring up the maps also. So you're you're with the with the proposed the new proposed budget of one sixty five, seven fifty four. That would get us the smaller section, but not Buffalo Dunes?
No, it would include Buffalo Dunes. I'm budgeting Buffalo Dunes out of a. Park and Rec or a park account, the fund thirty, the liquor tax. We've set money aside in that to handle it because it's not a very big expense. So really, let me go back and look at our recommendation. I've kind of left this open and tried to give you as much information. As as I can, and so when we go to recommendations, this is probably a recommendation. That is off the beaten path that you've maybe not seen before or very seldom. And so from a preventative maintenance perspective, yes, we we want to do this project. We we want to make it happen, right? From an immediate cost reduction perspective, we could modify the project. And save the money now and see what happens maintenance wise with these streets that we don't do down the road. If we do a reduced, if we do a reduced, I would say we move on to cycle two. And deal with whatever maintenance issues would come up in cycle one. That we didn't prevent by doing the whole thing moving forward, because I think it's a mistake. To continue to kick another cycle down the road on all the cycles for another year. And continue to move forward with that so we so we don't go behind another year.
Andy, if you don't mind, I'll jump in a little bit. This is City Manager Alan. When Andy and I talked about it. This agenda item possibility, really the context here is this is one of the first moves. That is in response to that preparing for a a financial downturn and. Knowing that two months from now or three months from now, when the commission's finalizing a budget, you're going to be looking for. Chips to play is kind of the terminology we use, but and there's very few that have this type of a price tag, and so there was an opportunity to stop some things that were in motion. And this one, while we had approved it, a question being we hadn't signed the agreement yet. The agreement wasn't due until the end of this week, and so. You know, we we had a conversation with the vendors and they were they were under understanding. They didn't. Take that to be anything other than us being financially responsible to ask you that question again. But one of the one of the discussions originally was skip cycle one, do cycle one next year, everything gets pushed off a year. We're probably we're already at a six year cycle because we used to be at a five year cycle at one point and maybe two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and stretched it a little bit to. In in a similar circumstance to six years. And so as we talked about it. We felt it was necessary to show you this option. I mean, you're going to be the of every confidence, you're going to be dealing with a sales tax shortfall. That is of this size or greater in the general fund alone. And. You know, to to not. To go ahead and sign that agreement and not give you the option or the flexibility to do something different would have. Would have been a mistake on our part, we believe. would have been a mistake on our part, we believe. Uh, the Andy's, Andy's point about doing the uh, doing a partial uh allows us to stay on that six-year cycle. And then one of the other options, if there's favorable, if there's a year where there's favorable unit pricing, uh, we can add volume. We do, we do that anyways. We go and hit. Uh, we'll use up that quantity because they are estimated quantities. We're paying for them, but we may not need it all or it covers it all. Um, the, the estimates are generally long. And so we'll go hit another road or two or a trouble spot. Um, you know, we, we could do two things. We could strategically use that extra quantity on the, on this area, or we could, we could budget a little more aggressively in the subsequent five years. So that by the time we get done with cycle six, we're caught up. Um, and we're back on, we're back on schedule when cycle one rolls around next time. That Andy does, is that a fair representation of what we talked about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Mayor Andrew. I, I do appreciate not knowing, you know, where the economy and where our budget's going to be. I do appreciate you being proactive. And so um, um, you know, the, the, the street ceiling, that we have a huge um cost for their infrastructure on streets and roads. And so I know this is an important, important process. I mean, it's hard on people who bike, but um, we can always get away from the sand. But um, I know that this is, so this is something I, I really appreciate you bringing and Andy spending time saying, hey, um, let's do this. I also learned that I didn't realize those places where water gathered was called bird baths. That's very interesting to me. Any further questions from the commission?
This is Commissioner Ortiz. Um, just a little bit of clarity here. I'd like to just kind of mention that we, what we're doing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, we're not really necessarily abandoning these. We're probably going to go ahead. And if we do the alternative, is go back and take care of any major potholes and subsequent things as far as um crack sealing or something like that. Is that correct?
This, this was all, these, this area has already been cracked sealed uh with, with this winter's project. So that's been done. So there, there is an advantage to that as far as water, but absolutely not. We, we would, we would never, as long as we have the manpower and the finances, just let those, those streets go. Um, we, we handled potholes in that area last year. And if there's more that come up this year and the subsequent years, we will definitely go address those.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other additional questions? If not, I'll call for a motion.
Commissioner Sessna, I'll make the motion that we uh, uh, go with alternative two and modify the project using the unit price low bids approved on March seventeenth to a total project cost of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven forty-three and twenty cents.
So we have a motion? Do we have a sentence?
Did you give me? Shannon Dick, I'll second that.
So Commissioner Dick seconds. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further ques, any further uh discussion? All those in favor respond by saying aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Sessna, aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So it passes five to, to zero. Thank you so much. Thanks, Andy, for your work.
Thank you.
The next item, Mayor and Commissioners, is a new business, item twelve A. This is City Manager Allen, by the way. Uh, Sheila Crane, Executive Director of Downtown Division Eight, is now going to provide a quarterly update to the government.
And then back them off. Well, what I think he would say
Hey, Andy?
Extra after our
Can we mute Andy's connection?
When they come, if there's extra material of square yard.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, what you, what was in your packet was a, a portion of the annual report, but I'll also touch today on uh those things that are first quarter items and then uh on, on the COVID nineteen. So if we could um move to the next slide, please. So this slide uh just talks about the, the new and the relocated businesses into the downtown corridor. Uh, what's the most significant of this particular slide is if you look at the size of some of those buildings, there was a massive amount of square footage that was filled in, in two thousand nineteen. And this takes our occupancy rate up to uh ninety-three percent. I'm, I'm not going to go through everything on every slide. I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights. That's okay. Um, and then if we can uh scroll past that narrative and go to the sales tax slide, please. Um, this was some really good news that, that came out of two thousand nineteen. Um, a typical year would be a three percent increase in sales tax revenues. Um, in the downtown corridor specifically, I think that also lends itself to Garden City as a whole. Um, so you can see that the sales were close to seventeen million specifically in the downtown corridor. What's really remarkable about this is we were up four percent um over two thousand eighteen, which is great all by itself. But there's a few more pieces of information to put with that. Um, and, and that is that in the beginning of two thousand nineteen, there was one snowstorm right after the other. And uh we were down significantly in sales tax revenues in the first quarter specifically in downtown. And so uh we knew there was some ground to be made up there. We also had one of uh what would be considered an anchor store that was closed for a couple of months during that time. So ultimately, what ended up happening at the end of the year is not only did that downtown corridor make up all of that first quarter loss, um, make up any loss that would have been accounted for when the uh anchor was closed, but then still finished a percent ahead. So what that tells us is that the downtown corridor was healthy last year um and capable of making a rebound. Obviously, the, the test that we're under right now is of a much greater magnitude. Um, but the, the, the health of everything last year was in really, really good shape. Uh, moving to the next slide, this is about public and private investment um and permitting. Um, as you can see, the uh, the public investment, the number was down slightly from the year before. But the year before, we had some major projects that went on downtown. So last year was maybe an abnormally uh large year for those type of projects. And this year was more in line with that, or two thousand nineteen was more in line. So uh even though it's down from last year, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not really a down number. Private investment was up hugely. As you can see, that lends itself to the very large spaces that were renovated downtown. In addition to the ten businesses that were listed on that first slide, we had uh six additional businesses that did some type of upgrade to the property. So that's a total of sixteen properties that had some level of investment or upgrade. That is also a very large number for downtown uh which speaks to the confidence that the building owners and the business owners have in reinvesting in downtown. Um, the next slide is the, the progress slide. I'm not going to go through that. It's just the various goals that were met during the year. Um, and uh, and what is, what's new and um upcoming. The next slide talks about goals and ongoing initiatives. And I'll just highlight a couple of things there. Um, we continue to work with uh the city of Garden City on the Eighth Street project. And uh, we were in the process of putting together a preparation guide for those Eighth Street businesses, just general things to do that would help get them prepared for what was going to hit them as possibly some, some down sales. The irony is that apparently we needed to have this kind of a document for everyone nationwide. So um, what we put in this tips and preparation guide will be something that we will extend beyond Eighth Street, although most people are uh unfortunately learning a very crash course in uh what needs to happen. During the first quarter this year, um, we, we worked with memberships, sponsorships. Uh, we've submitted uh four different grants, three that would be for twenty twenty items and um, uh, one that would be for twenty twenty, mostly for event-based type things. Uh, we've put together over two hundred packets that have gone out for Fall Fest vendors. Uh, we've worked with twenty-seven artists on um the Banner Art Project. And then we've been working with about thirty different food trucks for Food Truck Fridays. So uh that in addition to um everything that has gone on over this last month and, and working with these businesses uh with COVID nineteen, it has been a very, very, very busy first quarter. Going to that last slide, um, we, we have put resources on our uh website under resources. And then there's a, a tab under resources that says COVID nineteen. Uh, we have a weekly newsletter that goes out. Anything that is new, all the existing resources are on that newsletter. Um, in addition to that, we've sent emails uh to the downtown businesses anytime something new, any new information that has come to light. Um, the thing that is uh new at the moment is the um, um Kansas Department of Commerce is allowing those downtown Main Street programs that have I W W loan funds to do some short-term uh emergency loans with the funds that we have left. As you know, our loan fund has been very, very popular. And we don't have a lot of money in that fund right now, but we will be taking the money that we do have available at this time and making small loans. Unfortunately, they're small, uh but it's the best that we can do. We have enough money in that fund for six loans of two thousand dollars each. Um, those loans can be used for things that are very, very similar to the SBA loans. It can be used for um employees, wages, salaries, utilities, um loan payments that are due on commercial real estate. Uh, basically anything that has to do, it's considered a bill with a regular, normal business, um would be eligible under that program. Those applications are available because we have such limited funds and those, that application is not on the website, but if you will email me or give me a call, we will get those applications to you. And again, we only have about enough funds to do six of these small emergency loans. Uh, but they're, they're simple and the money will be able to be um accessed quickly. Um, in addition to that, all of the existing I W W loans that we have, we have deferred all payments on those loans uh for the next three months. If we need to reassess that and uh extend that a little further to try to help businesses out, uh we are certainly certainly open to doing that. Um, we have gotten a lot of questions, a lot of emails on um both the Paycheck Protection Program, um as well as the SBA uh Emergency Injury Disaster Loan Program. And I did want to make everyone aware that um it today, the Kansas Department of Commerce um put in a live chat feature. So now when you go to do the application, if you're having questions um about what they're asking for, what type of information they're asking for, you can activate that live chat. Um, and there'll be someone there to assist you through that, which might make that process a little bit easier. And then just a reminder that the Paycheck Protection Program, those applications have to go through local lenders. So check with your local banks first, um, if they have a relationship with SBA. And then the um Emergency Injury Disaster Loans through SBA, that application has to be filled out on the SBA's website. That's all I have for you for today.
This is Mayor Andrew. Uh, Sheila, thank you so much. And I appreciate you making those loans. I was um walking downtown to get some outside time. And uh we have an incredible downtown. It was just a time to rediscover downtown and just appreciate what we have. And it looks, it looks really nice. And I'm excited about it opening back up. Any um questions for Sheila from Commissioners or from anyone?
Thank you, Sheila. Appreciate the update. And uh, we look forward to, uh, as the mayor mentioned, look forward to uh downtown. And we know this is an event-heavy part of the year coming up for, for you, about a six-month stretch where uh you and your volunteers are uh putting in a, a lot of activity. And uh whether that's Friday activities or evening shopping activities or major events uh like Fall Fest, uh it's a lot of work and, and we know that uh, uh, you and your volunteers are to credit for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next item for the commission's consideration under new business twelve B. Um, this is City Manager Allen, by the way. Sorry. Uh, the governing body is asked to consider and authorize a one-time credit towards Garden City Electric Customers Utility Bill in the amount of seven hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, I'll invite Public Utilities Director Mike Muirhead to begin sharing on this item. Mike? Mike, if you're talking, you're muted right now. So uh unmute yourself and probably start over. Please. While he's figuring that out, I think I can get, get the agenda items started for the commission. Then he'll probably be joining us for questions and answers. If we get further to the questions and answers part and he's not available, uh, we may just have to take a pass for, for the time being. So with uh the unprecedented impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic on the health of, on the health of the, the economy of the entire world, there is for many an immediate need for financial relief in whatever form it may come. We know that there are residents and businesses in Garden City who are struggling with bills and experience reduced work hours or have even lost uh their jobs. Garden City has operated its electric utility since nineteen fourteen and has done what it could do over the years to help its customers. Uh, in our, uh, not just necessarily in our research uh of, of the current situation, but um, we've come across in the past uh the uh evidence of a response to the nineteen thirty-three banking crisis uh where the governing body deemed it necessary to issue five-dollar utility certificates to all of its citizens uh for use towards their utility consumption and ease the frustrations associated with those difficult times. Uh, today's probably a a, a similar, a similar time uh in, in history. Uh, and we looked uh across the board, as you've seen from some other agenda items, but across the board in our departments to see if uh there was a way that each of our business units at the city might be able to help. Uh, this agenda item is the product of the Electric Utilities uh examination of how they might be able to help. So every year, the electric utility budgets seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Jameson Energy Center operating uh to its operating reserve account. This reserve account currently has sufficient reserves in place for the governing body to consider providing the following one-time utility credit to residents of, uh, in businesses of Garden City, which would total uh an amount very close to that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So a breakdown of how this might be spent uh is wi- with our current number of residential utility counts at ten thousand, one hundred forty, those customers would be proposed to receive a fifty-dollar credit applied to their electric account. A little bit of background here that if you would take out the ten percent highest users on the residential area or residential customers, ten lowest users uh on uh uh electric utility and then figured out the average of the rest of the bell curve and remove the outliers, average out the, the middle of the, the middle of the curve, that comes to uh right at fifty dollars. And so uh it would be across the board a fifty-dollar credit, but it's related to what the average uh customer would have in the way of a, of a utility bill. Uh, the average residential customer. The other two categories are small, general, commercial uh and large uh, small, general service, large, general smir, service or, or small, commercial, large, commercial. Um, those are not based on the number of employees or how much business uh your company does. They're based on the They're based on the uh really the power. So this is different than energy. This would be the power uh that, that is demanded on the system to operate your business. And so those that uh uh demand more power, they call on the system uh in a heavy load uh format. The uh, they're in that large commercial account and the smaller commercial accounts don't get, don't get paid a demand charge, but pay a higher kilowatt hour or energy charge. So for the smaller commercial accounts, which tend to be in our commercial accounts, the smaller bills, they would receive a one-time $125 credit to their electric account. And the 472 large commercial accounts would receive a $200 credit. Uh, these fall short, in the case of large commercial ser- service fall well short of uh what an average monthly bill is. But it's still a uh a, a credit towards those businesses and one where blended with the residential strategy. Uh, would, would bring us in line with that $750,000 that we felt we had identified as something we could use towards this type of uh assistance. So your alternatives are to approve the uh, the one-time credit as presented or um to make some modifications to it or to pass on using the electric utility proceeds for a one-time credit. Then our, our recommendation is if you feel comfortable using those reserve funds for the Jameson Energy Center, we would propose the uh, the structure as, as, as we've modeled in this agenda item. So with that, I will uh turn it over to questions and we'll see if Mike's joined us.
Hi, this is Mike. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
This is Commissioner Sessna. I had a question about uh our reserve for Jameson. Where are we currently sitting at with our reserve fund for the center?
Uh, this is Mike Muirhead, Public Utilities Director. We currently have a balance of $4,650,000 in the Jameson account. And our intention would be to continue to place the $750,000 per year in there. For the foreseeable future, for probably 10 years.
So Mike, this is Mayor Andrew. So um, so your goal for that, so the goal for that account or that reserve account is, is what?
Our goal, eventually, we, we would like to have approximately $10 million in that account. The uh, the purchase price of those units uh initially was right around $40 million. So 10 million would be sufficient to replace one or possibly two of those in the event that we had to.
So uh Mayor Andrew, again, do you take repairs out of this um or out of this um reserve account? Or repairs uh built into your normal operations of your, of the electric utility account?
Uh, Mike Muirhead, again, we do have an operating account under our, our normal expenses come out of a different uh line item, Mayor. This particular one, we did use it the one time when we had to uh draw down, I believe it was $100,000 for a uh insurance uh claim that we had processed. Otherwise, it comes out of a different operating account.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Ortiz. Hey, Mike, I don't, um, I guess I have a question and a comment, but I do think, I, I like what the city is trying to do and, and what, you know, Matt and everyone involved are trying to do for the city and those small businesses and large businesses that are struggling right now. Um, I guess the question for me is, if, I have two questions and I'll, I'll just ask the first one first and then we can go from there. But um if there was an amount that was given to each resident and each commercial business, what would it look like if I wasn't really in need of that because I've got some help somewhere else?
Sure. This is Mike Muirhead, uh Public Utilities Director. And we've, we talked about that internally uh to quite some length. Because there are people out there that uh, I'll just use myself, for example, I won't take the $50 credit. But it's too difficult for us to internally try to manage that uh particular thing. It's very cumbersome, it'd be complex. What my recommendation would be is that for myself, what I will do is turn around and take my $50 credit and I'll just write a personal check to the entity that I want or to that particular person that I want to help out or that particular business. And that would, in my view, that would be the easiest way to pass that on through.
Okay, thank you. I, and I do believe it would be kind of cumbersome or difficult to keep track of everyone's $50 credit or 125 or 200, but um I, I kind of feel it in my heart where like if I seen my mom or, or, you know, a s- another brother or sister that was struggling diff- more difficult than I was, I'd be comfortable enough to take that $50 and donate it over to them um to help with that or a small commercial business where they're struggling and, you know, I, I feel it in my heart to, you know, just pass that along somewhere where I don't really necessarily need it, but uh I do appreciate the $50 credit. But I was just trying to figure out what we could do to not pull from that account as much uh from that reserve for the Jameson Energy Center. Um, I know that's kind of a goal of ours, so we want to keep that goal and in case we do need to replace any of those. Um, my second question comes from kind of the SBA application. If I was to report any of my bills to that application, would that hinder um the amount that I need to submit?
I'll, I'll try that. Um, this City Manager Alan, I'll, I'll try to answer that one. Commissioner, but the big caveat is I don't understand Small Business Administration loans and everything I've read about it is those are like, it's a moving target right now of with, with what's getting submitted and what's getting taken. I think the way we're doing this uh, it is um, is a credit that's applied to, to an account. Uh, so it'll show up on an upcoming bill. And so if you're submitting your March bill or your April bill, uh I'm sorry, your March or your February bill is your evidence in your SBA application, it wouldn't, it, I don't believe it would impact it. If you're, haven't filled it out yet and you're going to be submitting your April bill, uh, I'm not sure what they would take into account. It's going to be an additional line item. It's not going to, if, if your bill happens to be exactly $50 and this zeros it out, is it, it won't show your electric bill at zero. It would show a utility credit at the end of, of the sum total and so it will drop that bottom line number. But I, you know, I would hope whoever's processing the loan, you could explain that that isn't a normal circumstance and would usually be there. Uh, the other option would be to wait until your May bill. Um, and uh as to your first question, we did, we spent a lot of time, we really liked the concept of the uh, could this get paid forward sort of thing where, you know, you could, you could really get, you could get the, the real help of $750,000 pushed back into customers' hands. Um, but then you could also get kind of the social good of uh people doing what they uh, what they felt was right in their own situation to, to help other people out. The difference was the uh, at the end, at the end of all that consideration, the proposal that's in front of you is over and implemented immediately after you approve it. The admin, the, this, the structuring of something administrative where we could check the legitimacy of who was calling in and saying, um, hey, this is mine, uh, and I want to transfer it here. And making sure that that was, you know, not everybody's going to know everybody's situation and so uh, you know, if it's somebody who rents, but the, they don't pay their electric utility, it's actually the landlord's name, um. There, there was uh, there was some administrative headaches that uh uh sort of out, outweighed the outweighed the, the good part, the good side of that. Uh, and there's nothing that prohibits somebody from saying, I just got a $50 windfall that I wasn't counting on expecting or need. And I'm now freed up in my own mind to go uh pay that, you, you know, pay $50 out of my own account to go help somebody else. So uh, really liked the idea. We had a hard time figuring out how to execute that in our you know, bureaucracy, for lack of a better term, uh how we were going to, you know, create the form or the uh, the, the process and the checks and uh the all the, all the different things we would have to put in place.
Yeah, this is uh Mayor Andrew. I do appreciate that we currently do have 4.6, uh, 4.6 million dollars in reserve. And um I know that we're working toward that 10, so have, having almost half does make this um a lot more, um the ability to do this does make it seem possible. So I, I do want to make sure, um, I appreciate Commissioner Sessna pointing out and asking about that there is a reserve already that we have the point for 4.6 million and also we're working toward the 10 and that we, we are not going to do this on an ongoing basis, but this is an opportunity to really pay it forward to those, our utility customers. We have a unique opportunity here. Are there any further questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Sessna. Matt, could you explain one more time? You said this is kind of, this is the top of the bell curve, kind of the average overall on the residence small and then the large. Did I understand that correctly? So it's kind of the average of all, of the bill?
Only, only for residential. Yeah, if, if and we, we came up, the, the starting point or the control number for us when figuring it out was $750,000. Like, how would we apply $750,000? Since we had some other things that were pointed at business going on right now, the CDBG revolving loan, which is later in your agenda, the things we administratively have done through uh the Solid Waste Program, we w- we looked first at, okay, what would, what would it mean to do X for residential customers? And then we started, started working there. And at some point in time, the line of logic came, what would be, what would be the equivalent of one month's uh residential use right now? And uh if, yeah, again, if you take out the, the out, if you, you, you consider the top 10 users, uh, so the people have the, the 10% of people, not top 10, top 10% of people who have the highest utility bill. And the 10 who have the lowest utility bill and you take those out, if you leave them in, I think the average is around 54. If you take them out, the average ends up about the, the $50.04, I think. Uh, so, yeah, the, the, the in kind of the 80/20 rule, the average of the 80% is $50.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or discussion before I call for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Muirhead. And if it's, I would like to just make note in the fiscal note that this would be a one-time credit. And should the governing body choose to authorize this expenditure, it's recommended that it be replaced through our normal budgeting processes uh before December 31st of 2024. So that would be a four-year timeframe to re, put that money back in there where it came from. Thank you.
It's a good point, Mike. Uh, the 2021 budget, uh, we could amend it to begin making, you have the, you'd have the 21, the 22, the 23 and the 24 budgets. So you've got those four budgets to increase proportionally, the $750,000 transfer becomes a number bigger than $750,000 and equally divisible by four. I don't know, I, not, something less than 200,000, right? So.
Yeah, Mayor, 187,500.
There you go, 187,500 additional transfer. Uh, we would begin budgeting that uh and do it, do it for the next four years. Good point, Mike. Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, this is Commissioner Euler and one of the things that I think that I really, you know, like about this proposal is the fact that for a lot of people, $50, a $50 credit is significant. Um, and I know that there have been a lot of um questions that we've received at United Way as far as financial assistance and and I think that, you know, by offering this, I think this will certainly help a lot of households and a lot of families. And I just think it's a great gesture and I know especially for small businesses and large businesses, I think that this is a significant gesture, but I also think that from um a goodwill perspective from the city, I think that this really is a great opportunity and, and I appreciate the fact that, that you all have put this together.
Commissioner Euler, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to uh authorize a one-time credit towards Garden City Electric Customers Utility Bills in the amount of $746,775.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Second, Commissioner Sessna seconds.
So we have a Commissioner Euler motion, Commissioner Sessna seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Sessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So all opposed, same sign? Hearing none, um, motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike. Um, item 12C, I tell you what, it's 2:30. In my mind, I was uh um thinking that if we needed to take a break, 2:30 might be a, a, a good time to do that. Um, if it's okay with the commission, would you be interested in taking about a five-minute stretch your legs, one-function break uh and, and return it, well, we'll say uh resume the meeting at 2:35?
And I would just. I would appreciate that, yes.
Okay, I would, I would just say mute your device. If you're on something mobile, don't take it with you. Just uh mute your device and uh we'll resume at 2:35.
So this is Mayor Andrew. We want to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. I see that Matt's back, and so we will go ahead and continue with the next agenda item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The uh the, thank you, the next item on the agenda, the commission's asked to review uh and it's item twelve C, and this is City Manager Allen. Uh the commission's asked to review a change in the uh the way we issue our uh community development block grant economic development revolving loans um based on uh the direction that's been provided from the Kansas Department of Commerce on some relaxation of of those program requirements. So I'm gonna turn it over first to Melinda to present the agenda item. Also, Lana Devall with Economic Development Corporation is uh is available too, and we'll speak to uh um how uh this program has been set up in anticipation of the commission reviewing it and then also processing applications. So Melinda, uh you're up.
Yes, Lana and I have, uh this is Melinda Hitz, Finance Director. Uh Lana Devall should also probably be on this presentation. Um I think all of you have known in the past that it's been very difficult to find qualified loan applicants for our CDBG funds. Um so the State Department of Commerce uh under some emergency guidelines uh issued new ways to use these funds. Uh we had to provide a public notice. Uh our notice was published on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Local approval only, so there is no loan committee uh that is necessary. The applicant must meet the LMI requirements for employees of the company, but the owner is not counted in the calculation. The maximum loan amount is thirty-five thousand per job retained. Can be administered locally. Uh we've been using Lana uh extensively on this. Just want to thank her for her service. Commerce is assuring a twenty-four-hour turnaround on environmental surveys. Working capital loans only. The applicant must provide a letter stating that the funds will be used to retain employees. These are short-term loans. Interest rate is set locally. There's no matching funds, no collateral, no loan review, no financial or tax returns. Uh the applicant must prove the use of funds for working capital, pay stubs, receipts, et cetera. The city commission can approve the use of the CDBJ, CDBG loans as outlined below. We have approximately five hundred and four thousand dollars available. Our guidelines state that these funds will be for loans, not grants. We set the interest rate at zero point five percent. The maximum loan amount per job is thirty-five thousand. Maximum term is three years. The first year, the payments can be interest-only. So what we're asking is for the city commission to approve the CDB loan fund funds with different different parameters, or you can deny this request.
This is Mayor Andrew. Thank you, Melinda. Uh Lana, are you on that you would you like to say anything additional?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh yes, the only thing um that that I would add, I I really appreciate Melinda has been great to work with us on this program. And we are trying to encourage businesses uh to to stay in that thirty-five thousand request level or less, uh just simply so that we can help as many businesses as possible. And we feel um fairly comfortable that most businesses, uh the thirty-five thousand would be enough to to guide them through, if you will, um the next the next several weeks while we rebound from this situation. So that those would be the only things I would add to that.
This is Mayor Andrew. Thank you. Any questions from the the commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I probably, this is Lana Devall, sorry, uh President Economic Development. The other thing I probably should add, the county does have funds available as well. And yesterday morning, uh we presented uh to their commission as well. They've authorized the use of their funds through this emergency program also. Uh they have about three hundred and seventy thousand available through the county funds. Uh the question came up during their meeting as to whether or not the city of Holcomb has their own funds. They do not. Uh so any businesses in Holcomb uh that that need to apply for these would apply under the the Fannie County funds. City of Garden City funds can only be used for businesses within the corporate limits of the city of Garden City. And uh we are working with Great Plains Development, Inc. in Dodge City. Uh they are the administrator of these funds, have been um since since the beginning of us utilizing these funds. And so they are acting as the administrator. As Melinda said, these funds are very challenging for us to get loaned out in normal times uh simply because of that low-to-moderate income requirement. Uh it does require that fifty-one percent of the jobs retained are in the low-to-moderate income um fit that profile. Uh one thing that I will update you on quickly, um the uh federal government is looking at, we have, we have sent requests up to through our federal delegation to consider uh relaxing that low-to-moderate income requirement as well during this crisis to allow us to to get more businesses assisted, but we have not received any word from them as to whether or not that's gonna work.
This is Mayor Andrew. Thank you for those that additional comments. They're helpful. Any other questions or comments from the rest of the commission?
This is Commissioner Ortiz. I just, um so just to clarify again on on the alternative one, the maximum amount approximately five hundred and four thousand, if you divided that up between the businesses of maximum of thirty-five thousand each, that's about fourteen point four businesses that we could assist through this loan. Is that correct?
If uh this is Lana, uh President Economic Development, if they, if you went with a thirty-five thousand dollar loan, I will tell you, we have had uh requests come in well under the thirty-five thousand dollars. Businesses are very are being very, very responsible in this, and and we're, again, we're encouraging them uh to only apply for what they would need to get them through until we get past this crisis and they can get open back up. Um I will tell you, currently, we have sixteen active applications. You're you're going to, uh should you choose to approve this, you'll hear two of the loan requests that have made it all the way through the process with Great Plains Development. Um but we have another fourteen in addition to those two that have already been submitted to Great Plains uh for administration. And then I have I have received four additional uh requests today for additional information to help them uh fill out applications as well. So there certainly is demand uh for the funds.
And uh Matt Allen, City Manager, uh Lana and Melinda, just so uh the commission understands uh or or that we we all are on the same page. The changes that the state made allowed for thirty-five thousand per job, the recommended the the recommendation coming before the commission, sort of the local adaptation of those rules that includes the interest rate and the maximum term is that the maximum loan would be thirty-five thousand. Is that correct to say?
Matt, this is Lana, Economic Development. Yes, that is correct. Again, we felt it was um necessary to help as many businesses as we possibly could with this. Uh I I should also mention uh those applications that we received. Not all of those are going to qualify under the current low-to-moderate income standard, so um that we can't just assume that those are gonna work the way they are. However, I'm still encouraging businesses, even if they don't believe that they will meet that LMI requirement. I am encouraging them to apply um for a couple of reasons. Number one, should we get a change to um allow us from the federal side to allow us um to relax that LMI guideline, that will put them in the queue. But secondly, it gives us the opportunity to connect them with any other financial resource as it becomes available, either from the federal or the state government.
So uh just to, just to be clear, um the commission could approve a parameters that either don't address maximum loan amount. In other words, it would give you the flexibility to spend all five hundred four thousand on one business. But the state's requirements are that that it would have to at least add up to an amount that was thirty-five thousand dollars per position uh saved or or retained. You couldn't have, you couldn't identify only one job that was retained as a result of this action. And then, under the state's existing rules over the program, issue something greater than thirty-five thousand. So you can, you could lift the lid, but you also have the flexibility to, through your own definition, lower that lid uh in a in a effort, I guess, to uh show that you want to keep some of that money out there and on the table for for other businesses. So you have some flexibility to raise that maximum loan amount, erase that maximum loan or amount, or set it at thirty-five thousand or even less. And then there was also, oh, uh Lana, it's my understanding that the county, well, yeah, the city's revolving loan has to go for businesses within the corporate limits of the city. The counties just has to be within the county, so uh people could also make application for it to be considered for the county money if their business was located inside the city because those businesses are resident to Fannie County as well. Is that correct?
That is correct, Matt.
So if a business in Garden City, let's say you got nineteen businesses and you only had enough money to go around to fourteen, uh those other five in Garden City could still make application to the county. It would be a political decision on the county's part as to whether or not they wanted to to exclude businesses inside the corporate limits or wait till city money was exhausted before they took it up. And I I don't know what their intention is, or if that came up in yesterday's discussion. I listened to part of that, but didn't uh didn't catch all of it, so. Maybe some, just something else to keep in mind as you're considering all this.
Any further questions or comments? I know we have a couple of hands raised also. See, Lynn on that, and I don't know if they specifically pertain to this. But any questions from the commissioners, and then we'll um I see the hands going up and down, so I don't know if there's actually questions or not, but um any other additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Sessna. I'll make the motion that the city commission uh approve alternative one uh with the use of the CBD, CBBG loan funds as outlined.
So we have, this is Mayor Andrew. We have a motion from Commissioner Sessna. Do we have a second?
This is Shannon. I'll second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Dick, so it's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, do we have? I heard you chime in. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Aye.
Commissioner Sessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So with that, we have um the four ayes, and is any anyone opposed? Same sign? Motion pass. Thank you so much. Thank you, um Melinda and Lana.
Item twelve D, this is City Manager Allen. The governing body is asked to consider and approve applications for an emergency loan using community development block grant economic development revolving loan funds, the program you just approved held by the city. And Lana will present this item. Lana?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right, so we have two applications, uh again, that have made it through uh the process through Great Plains Development, Inc., and they have sent us the information that we need for you to consider those. Again, as a reminder, we have no financials, no tax returns, no collateral requirements. There's not a lot for you to review as commissioners. Um so what we have done is created a loan report uh for commission review uh that was included in your packet. Uh the two applications, one is for Sammy's OC, and the other is for Patrick Dugan's Coffee House. We'll take those one at a time. Uh we'll start with Patrick Dugan's Coffee House, if that's okay. They could, they uh requested thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh they, it has been determined that they are able to retain five point two five full-time equivalencies. So that that could be any mixture of full-time and part-time employees, but it 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 is an equivalent of five point two five uh full-time jobs. of five point two five uh full-time jobs. And they do meet the fifty-one percent low to moderate income requirement. So they are eligible for these funds. And uh again, we're asking, uh the request that they submitted was for thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, you can choose to approve it at the thirty-five thousand dollars. You can um choose to alter that if you choose. Um, but if you choose to approve it, uh we will just have a couple of documents. Um, first of all, the CDGB, the commission review document will need to be signed um by the governing body uh by the mayor, excuse me. And then the uh, there's a a form called the Determination of Level of Review. And that is what they, what they consider the environmental review form. Uh, the state of Kansas has has agreed, the Kansas Department of Commerce has agreed that they will turn these forms around in twenty-four hours to allow the loans to be funded right away. Typically, that could be up to a thirty-day process. So um the fact that they are willing to turn these around in twenty-four hours is significant. So those are, and that does, like, again, that has to be signed uh by the mayor as well. So that, that's the first one before you. Thirty-five thousand dollars to Patrick Dugan's Coffee House, five point two five full-time equivalent jobs retained.
So this is Mayor Andrew. I have a question. So uh Lana, at what point do they um, does the payments for repayment? What time does that take place? Is it so many months down the line or when do they have to start repaying the loan?
Right. So the parameters that 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 we had you set, um that you said, that you chose to set uh are calling for first year will be interest-only payments. So the uh Great Plains Development Inc. will prepare the loan documents and provide those to the applicant for their signature. And then they will manage the pro, the payment process as well. And will automatically uh turn that into a principal and interest loan once the the first year is up.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Cessna. I make a motion that we approve the Patrick Dugan uh CBDG uh request.
So we have a motion by Commissioner. This is Commissioner, uh Mayor Andrew, that we have Commissioner Cessna who has approved or he has a motion to approve the loan for Patrick Dugans. Do we have a second? So Commissioner, Commissioner seconded. That's fine. That's, that's, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
I hear Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Dick, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So with that, the motion has been approved, uh five to zero. Thank you. And we're ready for the next one. Lana?
The next application you have is for Sammy's OC. Uh, they requested a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the number of full-time equivalency jobs retained is fifteen. And uh they do meet the uh fifty-one percent low to moderate income requirement. Uh, as a reminder, we we did um, we did ask that businesses limit their request uh in order to allow us to assist more businesses. Um, but um this is, this was the, actually the very first loan request that came in and uh the amount they have requested is a hundred thousand dollars.
This is Mayor Andrew. Do we have any questions from the, uh from the commission? I see that there are fifteen and those are uh full-time equivalent jobs that they're able to retain. Is that correct, you said?
That is correct. Uh, it is my understanding that they are currently not open. Um, but they're, in their application, they stated that this would allow them to retain those jobs.
Commissioners, so we just approved that the maximum loan amount would be five thousand. But the loan application is for a hundred thousand.
Is that a question for me, Commissioner Cessna? This is Lana, President Economic Development.
Yes.
Yes, uh, yes, yes, that is correct. You just set your maximum loan amount at thirty-five thousand. Um, but again, we didn't have that, the parameter set by you at the time that we took these applications. Um, so they were free to request whatever they wanted to. As I said, um, all of the other businesses that have applied have applied for either thirty-five thousand dollars or less um based on on our um our desire to help as many businesses stay operational uh over the next several weeks as possible.
This is Mayor Andrew. I do, I wanna make note that you said that they had applied before and had their application approved before that the the parameters came out. So I appreciate you making note of that also. Any further questions or comments from the commissioners?
Mayor Andrew, this is Lana Duvall again, Fannie County Economic Development. Uh, if you choose to stay within that thirty-five thousand dollar loan limit that you, that you set in the last action item, uh you can certainly just make the motion uh such that somebody want to. They could just make the motion to approve it at the thirty-five thousand dollar level so that it stays within those parameters.
This is Marin. Thank you.
Mayor Andrew, this is Commissioner Ortiz. I'd like to make the motion for the governing body to approve the applications with the thirty-five thousand dollar maximum limit.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Ortiz. Do we have a second?
Commissioner second, Cessna second.
So we have a second from Commissioner Cessna. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Shannon, Dick, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lana.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And ladies, sorry.
Thank you, Lana. Uh, City Manager Allen here. Uh, next item on the agenda is item twelve E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the Garden City Regional Airport Fee and Rent Deferral Program for Fiscal Year 2020. Rochelle?
This is Mayor Andrew. Uh Rochelle, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Okay, good afternoon. I unmuted myself. Sorry for that.
Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Rochelle Powell. Uh, the Garden City Regional Airport receives federal funds from the Federal Aviation Administration. The FAA has grant assurances that ensures airports operate in a fiscally responsible manner while pervert providing fair and equal opportunities for tenants. The airport fee and rent deferral program will provide tenants the option to defer fees and or rents for up to six months, not to exceed payment by December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The payments that aren't made by December thirty-first would be subject to interest charges. Tenants would provide the request to the Director of Aviation, who would forward the recommendation to the City Manager for final approval. This program would be in compliance with the FAA's assurances and the FAA's information to airports on considering COVID-nineteen accommodations.
Does anyone have any que, this is Mayor Andrew. Does anyone have any questions?
This is Commissioner Cessna. I make a motion that we approve the Garden City Regional Airport Fee and Rent Deferral Program for Fiscal Year 2020.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Euler, all second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Your, your internet must have been a little bit slower, um Commissioner Dick. Thank you. But all those in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So it passes with the ayes. Are all those in, I'm sorry, are those opposed? Same sign? So it passes uh four, four to 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 an abstention. So we didn't hear from you, Commissioner Dick. I don't know if it's a, an issue with the internet or what, so. Great, next item. Thank you.
Thank you.
The and and just to double check uh, double check the votes and confirm um Randy can opine if he wants to. If there's not, if someone participated in the discussion, participate in the vote, there's not an audible objection. It goes down recorded as a yes. So that would have passed five to zero. Doesn't materially matter. It's, as far as the minutes are concerned, it'll go down as an approval.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah.
The next item also with Rochelle, item H. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the supplemental agreement, number one, to task order number one between the City of Garden City and HNTB for the airfield remarking project at Garden City Regional Airport. This is Airport Improvement Program or AIP three dash twenty dash zero zero dash twenty-four dash forty-three. Rochelle?
This is Rochelle again. Uh, back in January twenty-first of twenty twenty, uh the governing body approved the original task order, which consisted of um professional services for the removal and repainting of all markings for both of our runways and the associated taxways. Through the planning process of this project um and some discovery, we have decided to defer the removal and remarking of runway twelve thirty to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, along with our um runway rehab project. Kind of combining both of those projects together next year. Um, so that has saved us a little bit of money on the design services. However, um we were, we did discover that two of our runway hold position signs are out of compliance. So therefore, they will be need, they will need to be moved in to ensure that they are in compliance. Um, and we're gonna tie that into this runway marking project for runway one seven three five. So that's gonna enhance our fees a little bit on that. So the supplemental agreement is provided to you to um make those corrections for the original task order and the uh increase for the supplemental agreement, number one, is in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. And that's for your consideration. Um, the overall project is estimated at just a little over one million dollars for um this year's federal AIP project. Typically, the city pays ninety-five percent of federal funds, or I'm sorry. Typically, the FAA pays ninety-five percent of the, and the city pays five percent. However, with the new CARES Act, it appears that this project will be a hundred percent paid by the um FAA.
Thank you, Rochelle. Any questions at all for, this is Mayor Andrew. I'm sorry, any questions? So we'll call for a motion?
This is Mayor, or Commissioner Cessna. I make a motion. We approve the supplemental agreement, number one, to task order, number one between the City of Garden City and HNTB for the airfield remarking project at the Garden City Regional Airport. Uh, and Airport Improvement Program, AIP three twenty dash zero zero dash twenty-four dash forty-three.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Ortiz, second.
So it's removed and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Shannon, Dick, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye. Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. It passes uh unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve I, the governing body is asked to consider and approve awarding the Ben Grimsley Tennis Court Repair and Resurfacing Project to the low responsible bidder. Andy?
Good afternoon, noon again. This is Andy Lebel. The, the city opened bids on March thirty-first for the Ben Grimsley Tennis Court Project. The tennis courts are in need of repairing seams and cracks, as well as resurfacing and repainting them for restoration for safe playing surfaces. An alternative bid was required in the big package to add geotextile mesh, mesh enforcement reinforcement material on cracks, a quarter inch or greater. After consulting with Merritt, staff is electing not to include the additive in the project. Owner Paul Merritt does not believe the benefit is worth the cost. The resurfacing will need to take place in the same number of years due to the surface wear regardless of the geotextile mesh reinforcement. And so we had some concerns. When, if you look at this, the difference in the bid is, there's, there's quite a difference here. So we had some concerns. So in the, in the bidding process, we did request that those who wanted to bid on the project would provide references. And I, I made reference calls. And references checked out very well. And I also talked to Mr. Merritt about the product and some of the things they've been doing and and um jobs they've done. And so staff is, staff is very confident that Merritt can and do a very good job for the fifty-four thousand five hundred. And we've, we've, like I said, we've elected not to include the additive bid in this uh for the reasons that we said. Uh, just wanna go over what, what the project consists of. And I've been working with Aaron Stewart, the Superintendent of the Garden City Rec Commission. And they will be providing nets and net posts that Public Works crews would install before the project if, if the project is accepted and awarded. And then the two southeast tennis courts would be converted into three pickleball courts. And there's an attached visual in your packet for that. And um then there are some minimal drainage issues on the southeast courts as well that would be fixed by the street department before the resurfacing project would take place. And Merritt Tennis Systems would plan on starting the work based on their, their bid package dates that they gave us, June twentieth of this year and be done by July twentieth. Garden City High School uses Ben Grimsley's for, Ben Grimsley for spring and fall tournaments. And this repair would not interfere with any of those events. And the timeframe for the project would not interfere, interfere with the Beef Empire Days Tournament, June fifth through seventh. And they only use that for warming up and evening playing during the tournament. They don't use Ben Grimsley for competition courts. And these courts were last resurfaced in two thousand and four. And we expect to get somewhere around it's, it's pretty, pretty open on time. It's based on usage, but with with just normal recreational usage, we would hope to get somewhere between eight and ten years of use out of this surface that we're proposing today. And so there's, there's three alternatives. One would be approve the low base bid for Merritt Tennis and Track Systems for fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars and sixteen cents. Two, approve the base bid from McCallum and Associates for a hundred and five thousand five hundred ninety dollars and ninety-five cents, or deny the project in an effort to save general fund expenses. And so when, where you see that on the fiscal note, last year when we held, presented carryover funds, we, we put thirty-five thousand from the general fund into an O O five account to supplement this. And then we have shared facilities also this year in the general fund that we said we would supplement this project for nineteen thousand five hundred dollars and sixteen cents. And so the recommendation from staff is approve the low base bid for Merritt Tennis and Track Systems for fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars and sixteen cents.
Uh, this is Mayor Andrew. I just wanna make or clarify. So this includes the resurfacing of the tennis courts and the additional pickleball courts?
Yes. So there's, there's eight, there's eight tennis courts currently. And what you see there is the southeast proposed court layout over the current over one of the current courts. That's actually on the northeast, but we're gonna put it on the southeast court. And so really what it is, is public works staff would install the, the pickleball nets on the southeast court. And basically, it's just some line changes in their, after they do the resurfacing on that. So there, there's really no difference whether they put it tennis court lines or pickleball court lines. There's no difference in what the, the contractor really has to do, other than get the lines right.
So Andy, just to make sure I understand, so they are not dual-use courts. Once they're a pickleball court, that's what they are?
Yes.
Okay, cuz you can't take on and off nets. So once they're a pickleball court, that's what they'll be, only pickleball. Okay, I just wanna make sure I understood. Any other questions from the, this is Mayor Andrew. Any other questions from the commission? Any other questions from the, this is Mayor Andrew, any other questions from the commission?
This is Commissioner Cessna. I'll make the motion that we approve the low base bid for Merritt Tennis and Track Systems for fifty four thousand five hundred dollars and sixteen cents.
So Commissioner Cessna has moved. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Euler, all second.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Cessna, seconded by Commissioner Euler. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Item twelve J, the city commission is asked to consider and approve the bid for the purchase of a cellular phone service plan. Mobile phones and accessories for the Garden City Police Department. And I'll invite Lieutenant Jason Chase to present this item.
Hello.
You're on.
We can hear you, Jason.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, I'm, again, I'm Jason Chase uh with the Garden City Police Department. Uh, I'm here for the consideration or uh request approval to purchase uh eighty cellphone plans and accessories. Uh, a little background on it, during the, the recent organizational study. McGrath recommended the department stop allowing employees to use their personal cellphones for business and uh issue them a department cellphone. Uh, we could take this information and started a working group and began researching uh. The need to issue cellphones to designated employees. Um, we consulted with the city attorney, uh took that information with our research. And we recommend that the department issue cellphones to employees. Um, currently, the police department issues a cellphone stipend. Uh, to select personnel in the amount of forty one thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars and twenty three cents on a yearly basis. Um, so we took all this information and we began the bidding process. We tested and received bids from United Wireless, A T and T, Verizon, and Hyperion. Um. What our recommendation is, uh, uh, the staff's recommendation is uh. To, we recommend A T and T as it meets all the uh specifications and no upfront cost. Um, if we, if this is approved today, this would allow the majority of the department uh to be issued a cellphone. Uh, without additional cost to the city by reallocating the stipend for the cost of the cellphone. Uh, the total amount would be thirty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents, uh excluding taxes and fees. Um, but uh, we could use that forty one thousand dollars that we're currently paying on stipends. Uh, and that's all I have. Uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, uh, Jason, this is Mayor Andrew. So now, when the, the employees are issued the cellphones, that, they won't check them in and out. They'll be carrying them with them on an ongoing basis. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Cessna. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of eighty cellular phones, accessories, and service package with A T and T.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Cessna. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Ortiz, second.
So it's removed and seconded by Commissioner Ortiz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the next item is item twelve K. And this is the governing body's consideration and approval of distributing the second uh. Fifty thousand dollar appropriation of the Alcohol Fund Advisory Committee Funds as recommended by staff. Sophia?
Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is City Manager Intern Sophia. Um, so as Matt said, there were fifty thousand dollars available in the second half of the A P A C funds. Um, Livwell, Fannie County manages the second half of the, this funding. Um, so what they do is they receive all applications and then they decide on award amounts. And this year, there was only one application, which was Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Fannie County. Um, they submitted a request of twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And Livwell recommends awarding thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, however, that recommendation can be adjusted by you. So, um, that's the recommendation and, yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sophia, thank you. This is Mayor Andrew. Thank you so much. So for the funds that are not used, do they just go in to be able to be used for next year? We don't lose those funds. Is that correct?
I think it's um a fifty thousand dollar amount each year. So if they aren't used, it. That's my understanding, that it's just fifty thousand each year. It doesn't roll over to the next year, but I could be wrong, so.
Yeah, this is a fund outside of the general fund, so it gets to hold its own, uh, its own cash balance, and the cash balance would actually carry over in this instance. So it's a specialty use fund uh under authorization of the state, and so we budget this in a. Outside of the general fund and what's called a fund with no tax levy, so they hold their balance kind of like an enterprise fund does, like our utilities. Uh, and, and, yeah, so it would be available to spend in future years.
So this is Mayor Andrew. I have one other question and I'll open it up for Commissioners. So as far as um the advertising for these funds. Is it, it's still held within the city that we advertise that these funds are available? Is that correct, Sophia?
Yes. Um, I know this year there were two, one or two social media posts um that went out before the um. Before applications were being accepted.
Thank you. Any other questions from other commissioners? Seeing that, I'll go ahead and I'll call for a motion, or if you had, did you have a question?
This is Commissioner Cessna. I make a motion, we approve the recommendation to award thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars to Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
So it's removed. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Ortiz, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Shannon Dick, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So it passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Sophia.
The next item is twelve L. The governing body is asked to consider and approve receiving the compensation and classification study executive report. As prepared by McGrath Human Resources Group. I'll let Ally begin this item, and we're also joined by uh. The two consultants, the principal consultants from McGrath Consulting, uh. Uh, Melena Mays and Victoria McGrath. So Ally, you'll start.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I do have Melena and Victoria here to go over the report. You do have the executive report in um included in your packet. We also met with employees over the last day and a half. Um, to provide them an update of where we are in the compensation study. Um, and at this time, I'm hoping that Melena is on and will be able to give her portion of the update.
Good afternoon. This is Anna Mays. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to make the attempt to turn my screen uh to actually share my screen with you. So that you can see the PowerPoint presentation I have given all of the employees over the last two days. Does everyone see that?
We do now. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, joining me this afternoon is Dr. Victoria McGrath. I do believe that uh Dr. McGrath is working with Ceylan to get herself her audio. And.
I think I'm on. Am I on?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Um, are you seeing the actual PowerPoint at this point, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, we are. Yes.
Excellent. Okay, this is the, uh, this is what we have uh provided to all of the employees over the past day and a half, like Ally. Um, has indicated, and uh we have been working on this project expeditiously now since the end of August. And we are to the point now where we are completed with our recommendations. It has been shared with the uh administration, department directors, and now employees. And we're to the, the stage now where we get to turn over everything to the elected officials, so that you are going to be able to uh to. Consider this information when you are entering your budget process. Uh, one of the things that I talked to all of the employees in all of the groups was, uh, you know, this certainly is not probably the best time. To talk about compensation for employees when uh right now in the United States and throughout the world, we have individuals and businesses that are struggling. Uh, and so we acknowledge and recognize that, but at, we at least want to get this to the commission. So that you can be considering this for your employees, um, you know, as you are working through your budget, uh, your budget process. You have had a very heavy agenda, and I see that we still have a little bit uh more to go in terms of items, and so. What I plan on doing is uh going through the PowerPoint presentation rather quickly. I'm going to highlight the areas for the, for the commission that I feel are important for you. There are gonna be some other areas that were more important for the employees to hear than it will be for the elected officials to hear. So I don't want to gloss over too much, but I also don't want to weigh you down with information that you don't necessarily uh have an interest in seeing. Uh, you know about us with human resource, McGrath Human Resources Group. We are the organization that uh has assisted the city. In the police study, and actually, the police study is what started this particular project because we identified. There were some concerns and challenges with the sworn uh staff's step schedule. And that ultimately led to a recommendation to do at a minimum of compensation study for the police department. And then that ultimately grew into uh we should be doing it citywide for you. And so uh what we have done, and that's listed on the objectives of the study, is taken a look at what the external market uh is telling us and how you are. You, how you are compensating your employees against that external market. We've also taken a very deep dive look at all of your positions and their responsibilities. So that we can take all of our, uh, all of this information and create a new salary schedule uh for you. And what we're going to do now is go through all of the pieces of the executive report that you have in front of you. To tell the story of Garden City that leads up to the recommended system that is also included in that executive report. What I'm gonna first talk about is when we did the market analysis, uh, what, what we, we uh collected data from sixty, and that's six zero other organizations. Throughout the Kansas area uh to identify where the market really is for your positions. And when we do that, then we analyze this information, and then we compare what Garden City's wages are in comparisons to that market or those sixty comparable organizations. When we do that, then we put it into uh what's called a comp ratio, and so the next couple of slides that you see are going to be. Uh, on a percentage basis where the city's uh salary range information is in comparisons to the uh, the overall market. After we have gone through the statistical analysis. When we do that, we consider your market level, your average market to be fifty percent. So the closer the numbers are to fifty percent. The healthier those, uh, those salaries are, but given that, you know, markets change, uh, you sometimes on a dime. Uh, we will give you a plus minus ten percent, and so if you see these numbers and they're between forty percent and sixty percent. We would consider those to be competitive wages. So what we did was we took your salary ranges and compared them against the external market. And the next three slides are going to show you what we found. Um, and I'm going to just start by showing you your hiring rate or your, your minimum analysis rate. So what this tells us is fifty four percent of your hiring, uh, your, of your hiring rates are under the market. Or they have a comp ratio of less than forty percent, and that is everything that's in the red within that chart. In addition, then, we have twenty three percent of your positions that are between forty and forty four percent of a comp ratio, which means. Technically, they are competitive to the market, but if the city does not do anything with those wages. Over the course of the next couple of years, they're going to stop being competitive, and so we put them at the in the risk category. And the remaining positions then are in the blue, and that's about twenty three percent of the positions that are aligned with the market. And so what we found was, at least for your hiring rates, at least half of your positions are under market. And another quarter of your positions were at risk to fall under the market. Part of the reason why this has happened is because when the city has uh provided wage increases for the employees each year. They're providing them a cost of living adjustment and also a performance increase, but they're actually only moving the employees' wages. They're not actually moving the salary ranges, and so the salary ranges have gotten stagnant. And so as the rest of the market is progressing, your ranges themselves have stayed stable, or they have not moved for several years. And so that's why you're seeing the trend that you're seeing. When we applied that, then also too, and you could see this in the report, the midpoint. And the maximum of the pay ranges, you'll see the trend follows suit very well. And so that tells us then that the, the majority of your ranges, well over half of your ranges for your positions are no longer market competitive. Now, that does not necessarily mean that your employees are not being paid at a market competitive rate. What we did do was we compared what the actual wages of the Garden City employees are earning in comparisons to. Actual employees in those other organizations, and uh the result is listed here. And what you'll find is that it looks a little bit better, it looks a little stronger, and that only about forty three percent of your employees are under the market. Another fourteen percent are at risk, and forty four percent are aligned. Now, I, I don't get too concerned about this graph because there are going to be circumstances that an employee may be new. And they have not been with the organization long enough to get to a, a point where they are at a competitive wage. So there may be a number of reasons why you've got forty three percent of the employees on average under market. Uh, but it is an indication that, that, you know, there are some problem areas within the organization, and overall. The system that you have in place, it really just is not keeping up with the market, and so we're gonna have to make some adjustments to the ranges that you have. So that's really what the market is telling us. Now, there's other things that we took a look at when we got on site, and we've had many discussions with administration, with the department directors. We've involved employees to collect information on their positions, and we've done a heavy analysis on many of the documents that you have at the city. And one of the areas that we took a look at was your compensation systems that you currently have in place right now. Uh, and overall, what we found was that the, the systems that you have are not working harmoniously. You've got a, a police salary schedule that is a step model um that has uh an, a high number of steps. And so your entry level sworn officers have a very large range, but as they progress through promotional opportunities, that range decreases. And it's causing compression on top of, on, on top of each other. So those officers with their special pay provisions and their overtime. Could possibly be earning as much, if not more, than higher ranked uh individuals within the department. And the, the same will hold true pop, in public works departments and also in fire departments as well. So it wasn't just police that, that we identified compression, but the actual schedule itself. Is really working against uh what, what the city needs to have happen. Your, your range model, which is where the rest of your employees are, you know, that model uh is, seems to be working okay. It's just that it simply has not been maintained, and as we saw with, with the market information, the numbers are just simply falling behind because it has not been. It has not had any substantive increases in several years. So we talked about the compression, but the other things that we're taking a look at is what's happening within your city. And what kind of trends are we seeing that you need to be aware of going forward in the future, because some of this is what's happening here and now. And, and really what will be happening in the future, what should you be anticipating? Over the last three years, the city has been experiencing an increase in their turnover uh and. Over the last three years, the city has been experiencing an increase in their turnover and turnover rates. And I have identified here twenty six through twenty eighteen, and you can see that trend is increasing. Now, turnover over ten percent is sometimes, you know, an area that you want your human resources to be looking at. In government right now, on average, you can have a turnover of upwards of twenty percent because a lot of people are leaving the public sector for one reason or another. So in that in of itself, your turnover rates, I would say, you know, isolated themselves, they don't look terrible. You know, just monitor them. However, with that said, I can see a trend that it's increasing. And so for that, I would say the city wants to really monitor this a lot closer. But when you tie that into then your employee demographics, and all of this information is in your executive report, this is really a little bit more of what's concerning about what what might be happening in Garden City. Right now, you have a lot of employees who are aged sixty and above with a lot of years of service. And you can see that from the graph on the left where their years of services on average fourteen years or greater. However, when you're looking at how big of a group of people that is for your organization, it's only thirteen percent of your workforce. And so what you really should be looking at and focusing on are the are the the columns on the far right hand side, which is the age categories of under twenty nine and thirty to thirty nine. And right now, you have about fifty seven percent of your workforce is under the age of forty. Now, that's can be a great thing, right? It can it can bring a lot of ideas and a lot of energy to a workplace. But the other thing that it brings is mobility. And this is the group of employees that feel it's okay to move around to different employers, to try different things. And they don't necessarily believe in the longevity, the way maybe more of the traditional public sector employees do. And and you can see that when you're looking on the left hand demographic chart there, that those individuals have six years of service or less. And so they're coming and going a lot faster. And so what's happening is, I'm not surprised to see your turnover trend is increasing when I see this demographic. And some of the things that the city really does need to consider is not only what's happening in terms of your market, how is your market compensating in the public sector? But what kind of a workforce are you drawing in? And acknowledging that turnover can be good and there's not every position that you have at the city, you want to, you don't want to have someone there for four years. But by and large, you do want to be paying attention to this because you don't want to be the training ground and have somebody leave either, because that can be very costly to your organization. And it can have an organizational impact if you start losing some of that institutional knowledge. Very quickly, some of the other things that that you probably are wanting to think about when you're looking at the bigger picture is your geography. You are in an area of Kansas that is not heavily populated. And as a result, you are drawing in your human capital from your local area. And and you have private sector influence. Up until a couple of weeks ago, I don't know what your unemployment rate is right now with COVID nineteen, probably a little bit higher than it was a few weeks ago. But prior to the COVID nineteen, you had a very, very low unemployment rate. And so you're competing for the same human capital that your private sector is competing for, even though they might be different positions. And so you're you are forced to almost go outside of your geography and to start bringing people in from other areas. And if you're going to do that, you want to entice them with a competitive package. Now, money is not going to be everything. We understand that there's a lot of other reasons why someone would come would come to Garden City to work, but it is part of the picture. And so it we just want you to see in totality, you have a number of issues that are, they're kind of knocking on your door and and they really can't be ignored because if you don't do anything with your compensation system, I do believe that the city is going to struggle over time with with their recruitment and their retention. So really quickly, I want to get to the recommendations. We spent a large amount of time at during the development of of the system, talking about if it should be a range model or a step model, because right now the city has both in in differing forms. And what we landed on was what we call a step range model. And so when you see that in the appendix in the executive report, you'll see that there are steps one through thirteen. Those are two percent steps. They are set and an employee will progress through those steps on an annual basis based upon their performance. And so if they are performing well, they will get their step. If they are not performing, they are not going to get their step. This is something that the city of Garden City is very good at. You have a good program where there where you are providing performance evaluations for your employees. And so that should not change, it's not expected to change. However, it's going to, the the managers are going to go through the process of are they evaluating or aren't they? All right, I'm sorry, evaluating, are they performing or aren't they performing in terms of whether or not they get the step increase? And then that additional information about things that the employee can be approving upon or things that they're doing very well really don't have a direct impact to their compensation, they can have just that that really truthful conversation with them. So that's what's going to happen for those first thirteen steps. And step seven is considered your average market. Again, that was a a large conversation topic that we had when we were developing the salary schedule. And we were talking with administration with and in terms of, are you going to be market competitive? Are we going to go above market or are we going to be below market? And we really did focus on trying to make sure that the middle of that that schedule is going to be average market for the employees. Beyond step thirteen is what we call an open merit range. It's a fifteen percent range from step thirteen to its maximum. And that is going to be handled a little bit more traditionally like what you've seen with your range model. When an employee gets into that open merit range, they can earn additional increases from their evaluation each year. But that is going to be based upon, I would say, higher than average performance or that stellar performance. So whereas your steps are going to be based on adequate performance in order to move through that merit range, it's going to have to be a higher level of performance. The expectation is going to be a little bit more challenging because by that point, you are giving the employees, you're paying them market competitive wages. Now, one of the things to keep in mind, and and this is all of the employees have been notified notified of this. We have put your sworn law enforcement officers in with your general employees. And so everybody with the exception of a handful of the field staff in in electorate, the electric department are going to be on this new schedule. So it's going to be somewhat of a change from what from what everyone has had in the past. We also are, as I stated, we are going to be separating out the field positions within electric, your lineman. And we're doing that because the market base for your electric lineman is a little bit different than the base, the market base for the rest of the general employees. And so because of that, we are going to reduce the number of steps that they can earn. Depending on the position, they've got three to eight steps. And they're going to accelerate a little faster than the general employees because we want to get them up to their maximum faster so that you are more market competitive with this particular area. Your apprentices will also be able to continue to get through their their program in four years and and the increases will will align with that as well. But keep in mind that we continue to have the the requirement that all of these increases are still going to be performance based. It's just going to be a little bit more of a simplified version of are they doing it or aren't they doing it? We're gonna, we're going to, we're going to simplify that for for the the managers. Couple of other really quick things. We're we're going to talk about special pays or or at some point, the city administration is going to be talking about special pays because we have created levels of positions. And those levels now are going to tie to particular certifications and licensing. And as a result, those special pays, they're able to go away. And so administration will be looking at that. So by the time i- if you are able to adopt this, when that happens, those special pays will go away. But yet those special pay dollars will roll into the employee's base so that they walk away without having lost anything during the implementation. Really quickly, then, let's talk about the implementation and then I want to turn it over to questions that you might have. What we have done at this point is placed all of the positions in every respective pay grade. And then we'll take a look at, and we already have, every employee will be placed on their respective pay grade based upon their hourly rate of pay. We will place them on the schedule on the step closest to what they are earning without taking a decrease. We don't want any employees to lose any pay as a result of this study. If they have a special pay, we'll calculate that into their base rate before they are placed on the salary schedule. Now, you will have employees that are going to exceed the maximum rate. We call that a red circle situation. There aren't very many of them, but there are a handful. And during while they are gonna, they're they're going to sit frozen, they're not going to earn any additional base wages until that range is able to catch up with them with cost of living adjustments in the future. Now, that's not to say that the city can't pay them a lump sum for their performance. If they do that, that's completely fine. We want to keep those employees motivated to keep working. We just simply don't want them to be applying that to their base where that base is growing every year. We want to let that range catch up to them. All right, finally, and and this is more a financial factor that administration will be talking to you about. There is going to be some situations where an employee, because we've got a number of minimum rates that have to be raised up. Because of that, you might have some tenured employees that are going to be earning the same amount of money or the same rate of pay as some of the newer employees because those new employees, those minimums are going to be boosting them up. And so that is what we call in range compression. The city will have the opportunity to consider if they can accelerate some of those more tenured personnel a little further into the salary range to give some separation from maybe some of those newer personnel. We have done an analysis at McGrath on this. We have given that information over to the city so they understand what the cost is for that if they were to do, if they were to do something about that. So in overall, what will now happen, and and I guess this is my last final point that I want to make before I turn it over to questions. Salary schedule that you have or that we're recommending now, really, there needs to be two, there needs to be two movements of of this system. The first one is your salary schedule adjustments. And this is where, this is where your current ranges fell into an issue. On an annual basis, those ranges need to be adjusted based upon an economic indicator. And that economic indicator, it may be very locally based, it may be the CPI, you know, it's whatever the city determines it's going to be. Therefore, once the schedule adjusts, and let's just say they adjust at one percent a year, all of those employees' wages also need to adjust by one percent. And so that's what's going to help keep the the overall competitiveness of your salary schedule. But then second to that is those step increases that employees will be receiving if they are between steps one and thirteen or if they're in that merit zone, when you get to the top end of that, you know, based upon an average performance. And so employees should see, in theory, they should be seeing two increases a year. One is the salary schedule adjustment and the other one is based upon their performance. Finally, we do recommend, and and you know, the timing of this, we understand, is is relatively poor. But every three to five years, we do recommend that organizations go out to the market to take a look to see what is happening in the in the market, how are how are your wages doing in comparisons to the market? Within about every five years, you should be able to catch a trend if you've got a position that is really kind of taking off in the market. You've got, or maybe they're slowing down where that you can be making tweaks to your schedule. If you go any further out than that, then perhaps you're going to start having to play catch up significantly, like what the city is in right now. So every once, every three to five years, I think, you know, the question will be, what's going to happen with COVID nineteen? How is that going to impact this? And we simply don't know. I think it's too soon to to know what's going to happen to the local economics along with the the net, you know, the nationwide economics. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen, but I will make myself available for any questions. And Dr. McGrath is on the line.
This is Mayor Andrew. Before you stop sharing, I wanted to look at slide twelve again. And and can you, so you showed us, so what should that look more even across that slide? So I was really, I was, I'm trying to figure out the trend that you're looking or what we're looking for to accomplish. Slide twelve, you talked about, so again, are those to be, are they to be averaged out? Is that what you're, is that what this is attempting to do?
No, it's not really, I don't think that there's necessarily a goal, not when it comes to employee demographics. Because you are going to want to hire the best candidate regardless of what that employee or that what that person has for demographics. This is really more for you to know and understand that, you know, this is your snapshot in time of what the city has right now. And you have, you have a number of employees with a very large tenure that make up a small percentage of your workforce, okay? And your average years of service right now is about seven point seven years of service. You can anticipate that as retirements occur and people leave, that that years of service is going to decline because you have more and more of your workforce in the mobile category is what I'm going to call it. They're not, they don't necessarily care to stay with an organization for a very long period of time. Or they have figured out, I can job hop because it will be economically better for me to go somewhere else because every time I go somewhere else, I can negotiate a higher wage. So so there's not, I I would say that in this particular case, this is not one where you want to have a goal. It's one where you just want to continue to measure it because you might need to be responsive to your wages and your benefits based upon what your demographics are.
So this again, Mayor Andrew again, so I, you know, I looked through a report and there aren't really any comparisons. So what should the average age of service? I mean, do you have some comparisons, especially with cities our size or or organizations like our size? What what the average like age or the average years of service should be? Because when I looked at the report, I'm not finding any of those comparisons. So, I mean, I I'm understanding what you're telling us with ours is, I'm curious about what the marketplace is saying. And I don't, and and if I'm missing it in the report, then I'm I'm sorry, but.
No, that's okay, and this is Melina Mays again. Actually, in across the United States, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, once every two years, they put out this statistic. And the last one was from September eighteen, so we should be expecting it again later this fall. But nationwide, right now, the average years of service in public sector is about six point eight years. So you are, you are just over average at this point. And now consider, however, that when I started paying attention to that number back in about two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, your average years of service in public sector was closer to twelve years. So over the past handful of years, that number just keeps going down. And that, I think, is really the nationwide trend that, and Dr. McGrath might want to chime in here. There there used to be this this concept that that you have the stability of employment with public sector. And so that's why you want to come come work for public sector. But now, you know, now we are in a baby boomers retirement era and we can't fill our positions fast enough at this point. And, you know, people have a lot of different options and they're not necessarily opting for public sector. And so therefore, the competition goes up and you start, you know, you're competing against private sector forces, even if they're not necessarily the same kind of work. Does that, does that make sense?
So Melina, so I have a question just, and then I'm going to turn it over to other commissioners so that they can ask questions too. But I'm I'm curious about, do you, when with the salary schedule, does it take into account our benefit package that we offer? I mean, and how did you, because we have a unique situation with Grow Well Clinic. So I'm curious about how that's figured or if that's figured, are you going just by wages? Are you also looking at benefits also?
For what you're seeing here, I'm sorry, this is Melina Mays trying to, trying to.
I know, it's hard.
I'm trying, you're, this is your wages. Now, we did take a look at your benefits to see, are you perhaps doing better in the market? And this is, this would be public sector to public sector only. But based upon your insurance and your retirement, are you maybe doing better or worse than other municipalities? And it really didn't change, it didn't trend you any differently. I mean, everyone has the Kansas retirement systems. And so, you know, that's one where where, you know, it's pretty consistent. But your health insurance, it really was average in the ballpark. And so I, you know, I don't have the private data to to be able to compare you against that. And that's simply because the private sector is not going to share that information, so I can't give you that comparison.
No, this is Mayor Andrew. I appreciate you letting me know that, that letting us know that it was a factor. And then the last question was, are you And then the last question was, are you saying compression is not a good situation? And we need to eliminate it or compression has created an issue where people are, um, are making more than their supervisors or, or I wasn't really sure what that point was.
Sure. Um, and this is Melina again, your compression is problematic in that you have, uh, you, 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 it's, it's from a different, a couple of different things. You have this, the salary schedule right now overlaps, um, we'll just focus on law enforcement. It overlaps so much into the next rank that, uh, individuals really don't see any benefit to promote up. And then when you add and compound how much they earn in overtime and the special pays, it's, it becomes worse. And so what has to happen is we have to have a decent amount of separation between the ranks and your current salary schedule does not necessarily allow for that. Now with that said, this is a, it, it's a 24/7/365 operation. And there's going to be times when there's going to be overtime and there's really nothing that you can do to stop that from happening. You know, in the electric department, when, when the electricity goes out, they need to respond. When an accident happens, you know, your police and fire, they need to respond. And, and so, you know, we, we understand and acknowledge that and we work, you know, we work to have a, a certain level of separation and try to accommodate some of that overtime that we would expect is going to, is going to happen. Unfortunately, at the city for the police department, I, I think because you have had some vacancies in certain positions, that probably has, has exacerbated your overtime. So once you can get some of those positions filled and you get people, you know, on the road, road ready, you know, even in your dispatch and whatnot, that that will, um, that will settle itself out a little bit better. But what we did then was we took a look at how much separation, not only market wise, how far apart do these rates need to be? But, um, considering if they were to earn overtime, is that going to, is that going to push into the next rank above? It's not a perfect, uh, it's not a perfect, uh, correction at all. But, um, you know, we, we're able to fix a portion of that. And I don't know, Dr. McGrath, do you have anything that you wanna, that you wanna say?
No, I think the compression is obviously something we obviously deal with in public sector. So we're used to it. I think what you're going to have now is we've, um, mitigated some of the compression between ranks and positions by the, uh, end, by, by changing the salary schedule. What you're going to have now though, for a little while is in-range compression because now we've placed and we've squeezed folks into a 13 schedule. And that's what Melina had mentioned earlier about how you may have folks that are, are brand new and are going to be making the same money as somebody who is, is significantly longer tenured. And I know, uh, the city administration has, uh, questioned us about that. And then we've provided them some, um, uh, avenues to relieve that. It's also going to be dependent upon how much money you have in your budget to be able to spend on it, if at all, um, in the next year for implementation.
So I want to make sure and open it up for other commissioners. Thank you. Uh, Victoria, I really appreciate that. Uh, this is Mayor Andrew again. If you have questions, commissioners, um, go ahead and open it up for questions. I see none. So, um, Matt, do we just need to accept the report? Is that the motion that needs to take place?
Yeah, this is Matt Allen, City Manager. You're correct, Mayor. The action, uh, at this point is, is simply one that, uh, is almost just ceremonial and that it marks the end of the work being done by McGrath Consulting. But just for clarity, we, if the commission votes to receive the report, we would then, uh, make part of your budget discussions, the, the different options available, uh, to, um, choose to implement it, uh, whether that be full-blown implementation beginning January 1 of 2021, a, uh, partial implementation, perhaps an early start to implementation, uh, the, uh, and then taking on some of the considerations like, uh, implement the plan, but then also implement, uh, some of the compression, in great compression relief. So all of those issues would be taken up and whether or not you implement it would be taken up as part of, uh, first, the budget process and then to some, um, probably some decisions, uh, following that, but prior to the date of implementation. So the only action today is, is simply to receive the report.
This is Commissioner Cessna. I'll make the motion that we receive the compensation and classification study executive report.
Do we have a second?
Can Dick also second?
So it's been moved by Commissioner Cessna, seconded by Commissioner Sett, uh, by Commissioner Dick. All those in favor say aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Shannon, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. So the report is received. Melania, Victoria, thank you so much for the incredible work. And we know that our staff is top notch when it comes to working with them. And so we appreciate all the work that's went into this.
We'd like to thank you and, and your, your organization. They have been great to work with. We understand as Melina said, timing is everything and this may not be the greatest time in the world. But at the same point in time, if and when you're able to proceed further, uh, because we're all going to knock on wood, things are going to come back together again towards the latter part of this year. We are always available for questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, we've taken care of, uh, all of the, uh, business items other than the consent agenda, commissioner's report, and then a scheduled executive session, after which we do not anticipate action being taken. We are recommendation to take up the consent agenda next, which is item 12L on, on your agenda. If you don't want to pull anything off and discuss it separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve item L1 through 5. And also Commissioner Ortiz has let us know that he'd like the minutes to reflect that he abstained, um, on item 2.
So would it be appropriate, um, this is a mayor under, would it be appropriate, Matt, to go ahead and approve items 1 through 1, 3, 4, and 5, and then come back and do, uh, item 2 without Commissioner Ortiz?
Uh, you can do it that way. Um, at the last meeting we made, we, uh, if there wasn't discussion on it, we had, we approved it in one motion and had the minutes reflect that, the commissioner abstained from a specific item. Now, if you'd like to pull item 2 off and discuss it, I would definitely recommend that Commissioner Ortiz step away from the discussion and the vote. But on a consent agenda item, I think we can just acknowledge that he's abstained from that.
This is Shannon. I, uh, moved that we approved the consent agenda, items L1 through 5.
So it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Cessna will second the motion.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Dick, seconded by Commissioner Cessna. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Shannon, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
And I think we, if you'd like to go through item 13, the commissioner's report, we can do that now. And then upon conclusion, what we will do, just for those watching, we will leave the Zoom meeting running so that you can, uh, so that the public has the ability to see us in the meeting. The, uh, but we will, uh, we will mute our, uh, uh, the, the people invited into the executive session will, um, jump off of or mute or cancel their screen, jump off of the, uh, the Zoom conference call and then rejoin after the executive session. But actually, uh, you recommend, um, getting off of, uh, Zoom and then getting back on, uh, to conclude the meeting once we get to the executive session part. But we're not there yet. Uh, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, to, uh, guide people through the commissioner reports.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. So we will have the executive session and we'll talk about that as soon as we do commissioner report. So Commissioner Dick, you're up first.
Be smart, stay safe, uh, do your census. That's all.
Commissioner Cessna? Uh, we can't hear you, Commissioner Cessna.
Sorry, I have to take myself off of mute. I agree with Commissioner Dick. Also, uh, spring cleanup is still, uh, continuing in the community. So take advantage of that. Uh, again, stay safe, everybody.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Great job, everyone, on keeping us updated as far as the coronavirus. Um, I know there's some links out there that you can get information from. A lot of people are asking questions, but the quick way to get those answers or get what you're, what you're looking for is to go to the city website or the Fannie County Health Department website. Um, click on the links. They'll tell you the information that you need to know. Um, tell you how to prepare, how to stay safe, how to, um, go through the motion and then get through this stay-at-home process. So, um, appreciate the Zoom process and keeping us in the distance that we need. There are some, um, things that have been closed, a lot of things that have been closed. So just keep in mind on what those restrictions are, um, just stay six feet away from everyone. There's also the census that, um, I think now we're, we are in , um, the process of getting a reminder in the mail if you have not submitted your census information. So look for that. Um, and then also just let everybody know about that, um, that coming up as far as the census goes and stay safe and then happy Easter.
Thank you. Commissioner Euler.
Um, to add what everybody else has talked about, I also wanted to, uh, let you all know that, um, United Way does have resources available, uh, if, uh, somebody is in need of food or, um, other non-perishable items, also, uh, paper goods, cleaning supplies, things like that. Um, we also have access to, um, library books, art supplies. Um, and so when you call the 272, well, the, the COVID hotline, 272-3600, um, and ask for resources, they'll give out United Way's phone number. Um, but you can also call United Way directly at 275-1425, to get some things that are needed as well to get us all through that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Euler. So I want to thank each, uh, the city manager and Celand and all of who made the Zoom possible. I know this is, um, it took a long time. We were, we were very patient. I think for our first time, we did really good. That's just my interpretation. Um, I also just want to, um, I really appreciated the, uh, opportunity to do the refund or the rebate or however, uh, to that, to everyone in our community. And, uh, Commissioner Ortiz, uh, talking about, you know, how we could pay that forward. And so Commissioner Euler has a really great opportunity. So, um, I'll be sending a check to United Way so that you guys can distribute that. Um, I'm really grateful for our community. There's been a, a lot of people doing a lot of really good things. And, um, you know, those positives are coming through, um, truly that we have a, a community of hometown heroes. And I'm excited about what's happening. Um, I know that, uh, soon we will be back together and thank you for making the best of this situation. I think we're really creating a model and an example for other city and county commissions to say, to stay safe and also to make sure that they can continue doing the work of, of the community. So with that, Matt, um, we'll go ahead and, um, I know, um, we want to make a motion to go into the, uh, executive session. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Cessna. Would you mind making that motion? You're really good at it. That's the only reason I'm calling on you. So.
Thank you. Sure. Um, how long do we need to be in, in the executive session for Matt?
20 minutes.
About, about 20 minutes. We'll reconvene at 4:30. How about that? Gives us some time to make sure we get logged on.
And who do we need to have in the executive?
Myself, Randy, and Jennifer Cunningham.
Okay. I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to the consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, um, having, um, attorney, uh, counsel Randy Grzel, also Matt Allen and Jennifer Cunningham, um, for 20 minutes.
And this is for the specific purpose of contract negotiations.
That's correct.
For contract negotiations.
So I'll second that motion. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Shannon, aye.
Commissioner Euler, aye.
Commissioner Ortiz, aye.
Commissioner Cessna, aye.
Mayor Andrew, aye. Uh, motion carries. Thank you. And we will reconvene at 4:30.
Seeland is getting a message that, uh, it's locked.
Sorry, I'm not sure, um.
Okay, we do have, uh.
Oh, there, there he is.
Okay.
Something about being the last one to log on, I believe.
No, there he is.
Sorry about that, I, so we're coming out of, we're coming out of executive session and there was no binding action taken, so.
No other business, uh, for the commission, uh, Mayor, you all have completed the agenda.
Well, thank you, thanks everyone for their help, thank you, and hopefully this is our one and only, but if we need to do it next time, we will let you know ahead of time. Have a great afternoon.
Alright, thanks you too.